Township of Howell zoning board of adjustment, Monday, May twenty second, two thousand and twenty three. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township zoning board to be open. Adequate notice have been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty two, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty two, a copy of said notice was hand delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty two, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, four, five, six, seven, Route nine, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV seventy seven. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and it's a form appropriate judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you'll need to use the raise your hand feature when the chairman opens up the hearing for the members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you'll be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Eileen. May we have a roll call, please?
Mister Barillo.
Here.
Mister Cantor.
Here.
Mister Hughes is excused. Mister Mertens.
Here.
Mister Roscoe is excused. Mister Stan.
Here.
Mister Ryan.
Here.
Mister Rubell. Is absent. And Chairman Sayah.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Will everyone please join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you, everyone. Andy, can you please swear in the professionals?
Yes, Charlie, Jen, and Shari, please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I know.
Your professionals are swearing, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda, approval minutes, regular meeting. May eighth, two thousand and twenty three, eligible voters, Barillo, Hughes, Mertens, Roscoe, Ryan, Rubell, and Sayah. May I have motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second. Roll call, please, Eileen.
Mister Barillo.
Yes.
Mister Mertens.
Yes.
Mister Ross, uh, Mister Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Thank you, Eileen. Eileen, item six, vouchers. Do we have any vouchers?
No vouchers tonight.
Great. Item seven, correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
I have one thing for correspondence. Case number BA twenty one twenty one, Countryside North American Partners will be carried to July twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty three with notice, and an extension has been granted to the board through that date.
Okay, so that we're talking about under applications, nine B, case number BA twenty one twenty one, Countryside North American Partners. This case is being carried to July twenty second, two thousand and twenty three with notice. If you're here for that, go ahead.
July twenty fourth.
July twenty fourth.
Yep.
With notice. And, uh, you'll be in a live session at that time. Anything else, Eileen?
No, that's it for course, uh, correspondence.
All right, resolutions.
No resolutions tonight.
Okay, then there's applications before the board. We got case number BA eighteen dash thirty six, twelve ninety four equities, extension of time. Andy?
Uh, yes, Mister Chairman, you mean legally, depending on the testimony, um, by law, the board can grant the extensions requested depending on you know, what's presented to the board um, in terms of the reasons, you know, for the request.
Got it. Thank you. Mister Alfieri.
Good evening, Mister Chair, Members of the Board. Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. Um, I initially sent the request for the extension in March of this year, and then I supplemented that request with a letter that gave a little more detail as to the status of approvals. This applicant actually received approval for two, um, properties, uh, on Route thirty three. Um, the, the first one was thirteen hundred Route thirty three, and the one before you tonight is twelve ninety four Route thirty three. Um, one of the issues that, um, was relevant to both applications is the board conditioned approval on tying it to a public water and sewer. And the sewer was not at this property until the Toll Brothers project ran the sewer over. Um, after they did that, as it relates to thirteen hundred, which again is not before you, uh, the applicant um, had to get an NJDOT road opening permit to tie into the sewer, which is in Route thirty three. Um, and they also received approval from the township and Madison Regional Sewer Authority for the connection. So that one is now ready to be constructed. The current one before you, um, my client has a, um, has received verbally NJDOT approval for that road opening permit, and they expect, in my letter, it says that they expect to have the permit by the middle of June or end of June, I should say. And the, and they also had to get a wetland permit, which is pending, and they expect that this month or early June. Um, and the Madison Regional Sewer Authority Howell Township sewer application is pending, and they expect to have approval June of July of this year. All of that is encompassed in the letter that I sent, the second letter that I sent. So we're asking for a one-year extension so that we can perfect those outside agency approvals in order to move forward with construction.
Now, Ferri, that one-year extension would start when? What date?
The approval was granted, I'm just opening it up, Mister Chair, forgive me. Um, February of two thousand and twenty, so we're seeking, it would have expired, um, at, at February of twenty two, so we're asking for, I should have said a two-year extension to get us to February of two thousand and twenty four. One would be retroactive, one would be prospective.
Got it. Okay. Andy, you, you don't see a problem with that, do you?
I don't.
Okay, then what's the pleasure of the board?
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we grant the requested extension of time.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. That is, extension of time, two-year extension to February two thousand and twenty four. Okay, Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
Mister Barillo.
Yes.
Mister Cantor.
Yes.
Mister Mertens.
Yes.
Mister Stan.
Yes.
Mister Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome, Sal. All the best.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda. We're going, we already determined that case number BA twenty one twenty one, Countryside North American Partners is being carried to July twenty four, two thousand and twenty three with notice. And we have next on the agenda is case number BA twenty one dash twenty five. Carlos Ortiz Castaneda. He wants a use variance and preliminary and final major site plan. Description. Application of Carlos Ortiz Castaneda as applicant and owner of presence premises known as nine oh one highway, US Highway Block Thirty Three, Block one seventy, Lot ten. Seeking use variance and preliminary final major site plan approval for a three thousand four hundred thirty seven square foot warehouse with six hundred and fifty five square feet of associated office space to operate a commercial landscaping business in the HD two zone. So once again, this is nine oh one, US Highway Thirty Three, Block seventy, Lot ten. The applicant also proposes a concrete pad for handicap parking, a concrete sidewalk, refuse enclosure, septic disposal field, a stormwater management basin, and an underground roof recharge basin. Expiration date, July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty three. Okay, who, who, who's representing the applicant tonight?
Salvatore Ferri again, Mister Chair, on behalf of the applicant.
Mister Alfieri, talk to us.
Thank you. So, uh, just a couple of, um, housekeeping items. Number one is, I see we only have six members tonight, and this is a D variance. Uh, we're prepared to move forward, but in terms of a vote, we're gonna have to see how things, um, play out, if that's okay with you, Chair.
That works for me.
And then secondly, we have, um, we're gonna have, uh, four witnesses. Um, Rob Siv is our engineer, who, all four of them are in the waiting room. So the first one will be Rob Siv, our civil engineer, if we can let him in.
Eileen?
We're bringing him in the meeting.
Evening.
Rob, are you on?
I'm here.
Okay, great.
Mister Alfieri, do you also want to bring, do you also want to bring the applicant in right now?
Uh, sure, it's Mister Ortiz. Uh, you can bring him in. I see.
Then all you have is John Ray and Miss Caphone, correct?
That, that's correct.
So should we bring them all in and swear them all in at the same time?
That works for me, and then they can mute themselves.
That works. Andy? Eileen?
Well, Christine and John have to get in.
They will.
They're coming in now.
Hi.
Okay.
We see Christine, we see Mister Ortiz.
And John Ray, sir.
And John, then, okay.
Okay, so can, uh, Mister Siv, Mister Ortiz, Miss Caphone, and Mister Ray? Uh, he, Mister Ortiz, you're on mute. Can you unmute yourself? There you go.
I'm here, sir.
Can you, can you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and you got it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yes.
And then can you just state your names for the record in my box, starting with Mister Siv?
Robert Siv, S I V S and Victor E, professional engineer.
Mister Ortiz.
Carlos Ortiz Castaneda.
Miss Caphone.
Christine Hizaro Caphone.
And Mister Ray.
John Ray, R E A.
They're all, they're all sworn, Mister Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, you could all mute yourselves except for Mister Siv, who we're gonna start with. Uh, Rob, you, you indicated you're a professional engineer. Would you place a little more detail on the record as to your, um, engineering?
Now, can I just interrupt you for one second?
Yes, Jen.
Charlie got kicked out.
Okay, let's sit tight.
Yeah, we're gonna sit tight. I'll be right back.
Charlie, you back, yeah?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't know what the heck just happened. My whole computer froze and lost internet for a second.
And, um, the chairman is, um, off, uh, he's, he's muted and his screen's off. We have to wait for him to get back.
All right, Charlie's back. We're back. Mister Alfieri?
Yes, thank you. Mister Siv, you were about to place your credentials on the record.
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer, a graduate of New Jersey Institute of Technology. I have over twenty-seven years' experience in engineering field. I've testified before this board, as well as numerous boards throughout New Jersey.
And Mister Siv, your license is current, correct?
That is correct.
We accept your credentials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and Mister Siv, are you going to be referring to an exhibit? Um, you, you want the colored rendering or you want something else, uh?
Yeah, I believe the colored rendering that, uh, you provided would probably be the best one to.
And that's been marked as A thirteen, so do you, can you share it, or Eileen, do you put it up?
Now, if Rob can do it, that would be best because then he could point to it.
Okay.
Various, you know, portions of the exhibit.
Thank you.
I see.
Okay, Rob, so we're referring to what's been marked, premarked as A thirteen. First, would you orient the board as to where this property is located?
Sure, just a couple of housekeeping items. I know the chairman read the description, and just to touch on what he indicated. Uh, this was originally zoned, the HD two zone, when the application was submitted. Since that time, it's been rezoned to HD four. So I just wanted to make that as a note, but, um, as indicated, the site is identified as Block one seventy, tax lot ten, and is along the westbound side of Route thirty three business. It's approximately six hundred feet west of the Five Points Road intersection. And as indicated, it's now in the HD four highway development zone. The site has an overall area of approximately two and a half acres, with the front, I'll say southeasterly, one acre portion of the property currently developed with a single-family residential dwelling, gravel driveway, yard area, and a few ancillary structures associated with the single-family dwelling, and then the remainder of the lot is wooded and undeveloped. Um, the site is generally across the street from where Oakerson Road intersects with, uh, Route thirty three business. I'm sure everybody's familiar with that area of Howell.
All right, and would you describe for the board what the applicant, um, is proposing?
Sure, the application is proposing to maintain the existing single-family residential dwelling and develop the center portion of the property with a four thousand and ninety-two square foot building. Again, I think the original application that was submitted had a smaller building, about three thousand square feet that was referenced originally. Um, since it's been rezoned, uh, the building size is now four thousand ninety-two square feet, and it has a gravel parking area and storage yard in the backyard area behind the building. And Mister Or, for Mister Ortiz's landscape building, which is a conditionally permitted use now in the HD four zone. Uh, Mister Ortiz will get into the specifics of his business, but, uh, in a moment, but what is proposed is six hundred and fifteen square feet of office space within that building and three thousand four hundred and seventy-seven square feet of warehouse storage area for the landscape business. Site access would be from Route thirty three, uh, from Route thirty three via thirty-foot wide gravel driveway along the westerly portion of the property, which will provide access to the parking and storage yard that's behind the building, and that's the, the gray areas on the rendering. The proposed parking and storage yard area will be enclosed by a six-foot-high solid fence, and the layout maintains the fifty-foot farmland and residential buffer setback requirements in compliance with all the conditional use standards for the landscape business in the HD four zone. So the fifty-foot perimeter buffer is maintained to be wooded, as is the, with the existing vegetation, and supplemented with landscaping on the easterly property line. Um, that is the layout or nutshell of the property without getting to the specifics of the operation for the site.
Okay, and then, um, how is the stormwater management going to be handled?
In the front of the property, there's a proposed basin. The property drains or slope from the rear, which is the northerly portion of the property to the front portion or southerly portion of property to Route thirty three. We put the basin in the low point of the property along the Route thirty three corridor, and we will drain into the drainage system that is currently within the Route thirty three road infrastructure.
And, uh, there were, there, while we're talking about stormwater management, there were com, technical comments contained within the T and M report, most recently revised March nineteenth. You're prepared to address the technical comments relating to stormwater management?
That's correct. I've spoken to Charlie about the comments previously, and we can address them post-approval. They are technical in nature.
All right, and then can you describe the, uh, landscaping and buffering?
Sure, as I indicated, we are proposing to maintain the fifty-foot-wide perimeter buffer, farmland buffer, residential buffer around the westerly, northerly, and easterly property lines. We're gonna maintain the existing vegetation. There is an area that is open yard area currently along that easterly property line, which we are proposing to revegetate with additional landscaping. Um, as indicated in Shari's report, she's asking for a site visit and maybe some additional landscaping, which we'll agree to do. And then we're proposing some landscaping in the front yard area to help provide a desirable visual impact from Route thirty three.
The, um,
Now, before we, before we move off the buffer, you're not providing the full width buffer, the entire easterly property line, correct? Like, that house is less than fifty feet from the property line.
Correct, correct. That is correct. The all proposed site improvements are outside of that fifty-foot buffer, uh, whatever's existing that's in the buffers to mar, or remain, that is correct.
Right, but you represented that you comply with the buffer requirements, and you do not. So I just want to make that clear for the record.
Correct, correct. I apologize. I was just referring to the proposed improvements.
Thank you.
And the, the CME report, the Shari's report, March tenth, that you referred to, again, you would agree to address those technical comments within that report?
That is correct.
Okay, um, how about site lighting? Can you discuss that?
Sure, we are proposing to have site lighting throughout the parking lot. We're proposing, and let me just double-check the plan. Four pole-mounted lights, two of them, three of them will be along the access driveway. They will be faced into the site so that we will have rear shields on the back of the light, so there will not be glare from the back onto off-site properties. And then one pole-mounted light on the easterly side, again, facing into the site with that back shield to prevent, like, glare going to the east.
The, you referenced the conditional use standards for the landscape business, um, and you indicate that we do comply with them. Uh, we did, the only, the engineering-related comments, uh, the applicant, there are a few that are more operational in nature that will have the applicant testify to. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's thirteen standards.
Right, how are we handling refuse?
There's a proposed refuse enclosure in the rear of the property, right where the cursor is showing on the screen. It is a ten-by-ten masonry enclosure, which will be used for refuse and holding of a dumpster.
Okay, and then, um, one final question. Um, sorry, I, I was just flipping through. Okay, the final question is that I only focused you on the T and M report as it relates to stormwater management, but there are other components within that report that are technical in nature. Again, would you agree as a condition of approval to address those comments to the satisfaction of T and M?
Yes, as it relates to the site and grading and stormwater, yes.
Um, there are comments about, uh, lan, uh, lighting and other comments, um, that are in that report. We'll address all of them, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, um, that's really all, Mister Chair, we have. Uh, if Charlie or Jen or Shari have questions, he can focus more detail on this.
Got it. So, uh, fellow board members, initially, does any of the board members have any questions for Mister Siv?
At this time, Mister Chairman.
Great.
No, Mister.
Good. Okay, as long as everyone's good. Uh, Charlie, we'll start with you.
Yes, Mister Chair, you guys can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about getting kicked off there. Um, two, uh, I just wanna say, I did speak with Mister Siv a while back. We did talk about the stormwater management. I'm confident that they can resolve that as a condition, any board approval. Um, regarding the site, um, we'll wait to hear from the applicant regarding testimony of the operations. Uh, there's two items that I do want to point out. The applicant does need relief from curb and sidewalk along the property frontage. I'll let, uh, Jen opine on that, but if the board is not inclined to grant that relief, um, they should install it. If they are, then they'd have to make contributions to the sidewalk fund. Um, the other comment I want to make is about the surfacing of the driveway and the, um, gravel parking area to the rear of the site. There was conflicting details. I think some of it said gravel, some of it said DGA. Can you provide some testimony on the intent to that? Uh, Rob? Yeah, we're proposing to have a DGA stable surface. It's typical for this type of use. Um, we are proposing a concrete apron at the entrance to the Route thirty three driveway, which will help maintain the DGA on the property, and we did, as we discussed, uh, size the basin as if that was impervious surface so that the basin is sized appropriately. Yes, so I don't have a, I don't really have a comment on it in regards to stormwater management. I just have more so a comment on, in regards to, like, maintenance and operation of the site. Obviously, a paved area material is not going to move DGA, you know, will compact pretty hard, but it's got some decent slow bond in some areas, sixty-seven percent. Uh, you're gonna have some vehicles going in and out of there, so if the board is inclined to grant relief of our, like, full pavement section of asphalt, I just asked that the applicant, it's gonna be a deed restriction regarding maintenance. They're gonna need to make sure it's regraded, thoroughly compacted, so it's not washing into Route thirty three into the stormwater management basin, if the board's inclined to grant that relief. Um, having said that, this isn't something that we haven't seen on other similar type of landscape use activities. I just want to make sure, like I said, because it's on Route thirty three, we're not getting sediment washing into, into the roadway. Um, that would be my.
Is there a reason why you can't pave it?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, so.
I mean, to me, there, there's like no legitimate reason why this can't be paved.
Um, we can pave it, and maybe we, maybe the, the idea is to pave, maybe the, the main access area, um, just with the machinery on site, sometimes they tear up the blacktop a little bit in the storage yard area. So maybe pave the, up to the building or something like that, or we can pave the whole thing. It's up to the board, you know, it's.
I mean, I would recommend that it get paved, because, you know, you have parking spaces delineated, which doesn't really work out if it's not a paved surface. And I agree with Charlie, it has a tendency to migrate, and if there's really no legitimate rationale behind not paving it, I would recommend that you pave it.
Understood. So, and then the last comment I have, uh, for a site, and I guess it'll, it'll dovetail into the operation testimony, if there's any, uh, heavy equipment parking outside of the building, we just want to know where that is, and I recommend it be, uh, parked on a concrete pad, just so we don't have diesel fuel lines, you know, eating up asphalt and, and, and things like that. Um, but that's, that's all I have right now, Mister Chair, for the engineer.
Thank you, Charlie. Mister, one, one second, Jen. I want to ask Mister Carlos Ortiz Castaneda.
Mister Ortiz is fine, sir.
Are, are you, um, are you using track vehicles, rubber track vehicles, or are you using metal?
No, we're using rubber tracks. We, we only have actually one, one machine that has rubber tracks.
So everything else can go over the, in, the impervious surface, in other words?
Yes, yes, and regarding the, uh, the gravel driveway, uh, we actually have intent to asphalt everything, you know, the front and the back. So, um, we have no problem by doing the asphalt.
All right, thank you, sir.
No problem.
Go ahead, Jen.
The only thing I have, I, I think that Mister Siv kind of touched on everything, but, um, the only, there's a couple of things. We had asked you, identify, like, those bins, like, the four bins for the outdoor storage on the site, but there's no detail, so we would like a detail to pre-provide it to us.
Sure, we could do that, and the intent is to use those, well, I'll call standard landscape block bins to build the block.
How high, how high are they gonna be?
Um, I'll, I'll defer to Mister Ortiz, but I believe they're gonna be up to about six foot in height.
Okay, um, you know, what we really just don't want to have happen is that they're six feet, but your stockpile is like ten or twelve feet high, so I'll wait for the operational testimony. Um, I'm gonna defer to the board on whether or not they want sidewalk. Uh, you know, I mean, sidewalk has been the subject of much conversation in town the past month or so. Um, and I can tell you that in neighboring towns, uh, we've been requiring sidewalk on thirty three. Uh, it, with the intention of perhaps uh, encouraging bus routes along those roads. Bus routes will not come along thirty three if there's no sidewalk network, so it's up to you. But I will tell you that I've heard more about sidewalks in the past month in Howell than I have in the prior fifteen years um, after the Board of Ed decision, and you know, I get it's a state highway, but we require sidewalk on Route nine as well, so, uh, it's up to you guys.
We can provide sidewalks.
Yeah, we have no objection to providing a sidewalk. It was our thought that we'd pay into the fund and use it in an area that the town thought more appropriate, but if it's, if it's required on Route thirty three, we'll put it there. That's not a problem.
It's totally up to the board. It's totally up to the board.
Well, it's not even an option, Jen. The applicant has agreed to provide the sidewalk, so.
Okay. That's all I have for, for Mr. Sev.
All right, thank you. Uh, Sherry?
Yes, um, so it does look like they need a waiver for the, uh, to pay into the tree fund. Um, although it's possible, Rob, when we go out on site, you know, you might be able to get some more trees in there. I'm not sure, uh, what that will change your cost to, but, um, it's low. I think it's only like
Yeah, it's not a big number, and we can definitely, when we go out there, if there's a obviously more trees to be planted, we'll adjust the number accordingly.
Right. Um, the only other issue, I don't know if they technically need foundation landscape waiver, and they do have plants going along the front edge. Uh, the back, I don't know if you really want to put them there, but they might need a waiver technically. But besides that
And Mr. Ortiz is in the landscape business, so there's no issue with landscaping, whatever the board prefers. Um, we have no issue providing uh, around along the rear.
Yeah, so we have the foundation locate, uh, plantings along the front. Um, we do have obviously landscaping along the east side. It's not along the foundation, but it's regular site planting. And then typically, you don't put the landscaping along the backside, which has overhead doors, which allows the vehicles into the building.
Respectfully, we've been requiring warehouses to put landscaping underneath loading docks, so that's not, is not something that we do here in Howell, so you're required to provide foundation foundation plantings around the entire building. If you're not, then you require a waiver.
Correct, understood.
So, Rob, is there room in the rear to to put them in areas that they wanted to fear with operations?
Yeah, we can create little islands, so to speak, in between the doors to put the landscaping. Um, and along the rear of the building. On the side, on the west side, we have a walkway that has a covered roof to it. I mean, again, we can ask for the waiver in that location or put potted plants or something like that.
I mean, you're gonna need the waiver anyway, because you're not providing consistent landscaping along the rear, so I would request the waiver regardless out. And then I would recommend to the board that the applicant work with Sherry to identify appropriate locations for plantings around the building, not just the front and the other facades.
That's, that's perfect. We have no problem doing that.
Okay, very good.
Great. Fellow board members?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what's in front of the existing dwelling now? Is that, um, looks like Green Giant's? Is that, somebody knows?
Yeah, they're, they're existing promises recently there.
Okay, are they gonna stay or are they gonna be moved? Because I mean, with the sidewalk going in, they may be close to where would the sidewalk be? I mean, they, they look like this size, they could be moved easily.
Yeah, we have no problem modifying the existing plant thing to make it, uh, according with a new sidewalk.
Yeah, that's fine. That's all I have right now.
One other thing, Mr. Chair, uh, since you mentioned the frontage there, there is a spruce tree that I think would be best to take down. It's in front of the house. The top of it is dead. Um, so I did comment about that. I'm assuming you'll have no issue with removing that tree.
No problem.
Is that it, Rich?
Yeah, I agree with the tree too. Thank you.
All right, any other board members?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Ryan.
Is, is there a separate driveway for the residents, or are they using the exist- or the proposed, uh, drive into the facility?
There's a separate driveway on the east side of the property for the residents. And then the proposed driveway on the west side would serve the landscape business.
Okay, and they're not gonna blend at any, any point?
They do not meet, no.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, not hearing from any other board members?
I do have a quick question. This might be
Go ahead, Mr. Stanton, go ahead.
This might be for operations later, Mr. Chair, but, um, is there enough room for, I'm assuming they have trailers, uh, to pull the machines and equipment to turn around so that no one's backing into or onto Route thirty-three?
Yes, the way the site is set up is a thirty foot wide drive aisle maintained throughout the site that goes in a P-loop and then back out. So there is the ability to circle through the site or circulate through the site without having to back up with that thirty foot wide aisle.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
And why, while we're on that, is there a part of these parking stripes? I see where the arrow is right now. Is that for the trailers or is that, what's that gonna be used for?
So these center parking stalls are earmarked for the company vehicles associated with his business. And then there's two trailer parking stalls at, on the east side of the parking, uh, parking lot, and then the remainder are open for public use, so to speak. I, again, he'll get into the operations, but there's really not visitors to this site. Um, it's really for employees in his business.
Okay.
Okay, going once.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Morello.
Um, Mr. Ortiz is going to be living. Is that for him, the private dwelling?
Well, we'll have him testify, uh, Mr. Ortiz's questions are finished.
And also, is there going to be a gate, um, for the commercial access to the building?
That's a good question. There is a gate across the drive aisle along the rear of the building, which will
So the gate's gonna be at, at the building, not at the, um, beginning of the driveway?
Correct, the gate's back at the, to the front of the back of the building, yeah, at the building. We just double checked it, confirm it is at the back of the building. So the gate will go across this part of the driveway.
Okay, I'm just to stop people from, kids just meandering back there and just hanging out or whatever.
Correct.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, great. All right, Mr. Alfieri, back to you, sir.
Mr. Ortiz, you're still on, correct?
Yes, I'm, I'm here, Sal.
Okay, um, we, you've been sworn in, but and and you're obviously the applicant, and you're the owner of the property, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And you're in, it's your landscape business that you're, you intend to operate out of this facility, is that also correct?
Correct, so.
Can you describe what you're, a little more detail about your landscape business, that, the type of work you do?
Yeah, I mean, we, uh, we personally, we offer, uh, uh, mainly maintenance to properties, which includes, uh, you know, trimming bushes, uh, fertilizer services, mowing service, irrigation services. Anything that has to be related to any maintenance, uh, to, uh, outdoor property.
And do, do you do snow removal in the winters?
Very minimum. We don't have a, we don't have a, a, a big operation for snow removal, just a few residential accounts.
Uh, what hours of operation, uh, will you, uh, operate at this facility, morning and then PM?
Uh, we start at seven AM at the office, um, between seven and seven thirty, depending on, uh, and the time of the season. And then, uh, we finish by seven, seven PM. All the crews have to be back in the, uh, the shop.
So can you describe for the board what happens at seven, seven thirty AM with your, your employees?
Well, the first thing they come in and then, uh, usually I talk to the, um, managers of the crews. I set them up everything, um, they loaded the equipment, and then they leave within an hour from the property. And they don't come back until the end of the day, or unless they have to come back for, uh, specific reasons for the property.
And there's a, there's a small office within the building. How many employees would be onsite, uh, full time during the day?
One, one assistant in the office who handles all the pay, uh, paperwork.
And then how many employees would come to the site in the morning and then leave at night as you described?
Uh, during the peak season, it's between twelve and fourteen workers. And then as it goes down, it depends on the time of the year, but an average is twelve to fourteen workers.
All right, and and how many cars do they arrive in each day?
Currently, right now, we have six, uh, um, uh, cars coming in.
And then the same six would leave at night?
They will see, yeah, they live at night.
And then during the
But if you, okay, so if you anticipate that number growing, you should ask for it now.
Understood.
Otherwise, the six is gonna be in the resolution, and then if you have more than six, it it's gonna necessitate you coming back. So if there's, if you anticipate that that number is gonna grow beyond six, you should tell the board and ask for it now.
Yeah, listen, I hope one day I can have a hundred employees.
You, you won't operate here with a hundred.
By that, and I hope one day I can have a bigger property and have a bigger operation, so.
Would, what kind of growth do you anticipate that would occur at this site with this facility? So that the board can understand, uh, potential, uh, number of growth in the number of employees?
I would probably say between ten to twelve cars coming in every day, um, you know, in the future intent.
Okay, now, and you also said you had one onsite, uh, office employee, potentially you could have a second, I assume?
If, if it comes out to you eventually, yeah, hopefully, I'm hoping I can, I can grow the business to, to be able to have more employees, yes.
Um, we were talking about, uh, the vehicles and the parking. What type of vi- uh, landscape vehicles would be stored onsite overnight when the employees drop the, the equipment off?
Currently, we have operating, uh, three dump trucks and two box trucks, so it's a total of five trucks. And, um, I think there are three trailers right now.
And you would potentially grow that as well?
Like I said, Sal before.
I understand, but the board, i- if this is approved, then the board adopts a resolution as the board planner indicated, and they put numbers in there. You have to live with those numbers, and if you exceed them, you'd have to come back. So let's anticipate some reasonable growth that you would be comfortable with. For the number of vehicles.
Ten vehicles of the property, commercial vehicles, so.
Now, um, the, the building itself, what would you store in the building? What type of material or equipment?
Um, the main, the main purpose of the stores would be for equipment like mowers, it's, uh, small skid steer that I have. Cedars, uh, ditch which, uh, mainly equipment that we use for the, uh, for the services. And then, uh, possibly store, uh, fertilizer products, seed, um, you know, general stuff that have to be stored.
And that would all be within the building, not outside?
Everything would be inside.
Okay, now, we, we did talk about those storage bins, uh, that are proposed, four of them. How high are they proposed? And then how high would the stockpile within them be at the max?
Uh, it would be six feet, the same height of the fence, the max. And, uh, we, we would like to have at least, uh, four, uh, different materials, which might be mulch, possibly topsoil. And, um, probably river stone, uh, most of the typical materials that we use on the daily basis for the business.
And would the storage of those materials within the bin exceed the six feet in height?
No, no, no.
So they won't, you won't stockpile over the six feet in height?
Yes.
Do you have any visitors from the public in your business?
No visitors.
Uh, so there, so based upon the parking that's proposed on this plan, you have adequate parking to service your employees, even with the growth that you contemplate. Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, how about the refuse, meaning the garbage and the recycling? There's a storage, there's a storage area that's in, within a masonry block, the, um, enclosure, you're comfortable that that's adequate for the garbage that you produce?
Yes, yes, that's, that's a perfect size, yes.
All right, they, they, uh, there was a question about the dwelling. Who lives in that house?
Uh, right now, it's a relative living in the house.
All right, you, it's not your, it's not gonna be your principal residence?
Not at the moment.
Um. The, there were some questions, and you heard the comments about the landscaping, and you're okay with satisfying all of the conditions after there's a meeting on site with, um, Sherry to, to address all the landscaping comments?
Yes, yes, we have no problem with that.
There's a, there, you're, there's conditional uses that are, that there's conditional use standards within the ordinance, and some of them are operational in nature. So I just want to focus you on, uh, four questions to make sure that we do comply with the ordinance. Um, the first says that there'll be no recycling activity or processing of any material onsite. You agree that that type of activity will not occur onsite?
I totally agree with you, Sal.
Okay, now, following up on that, do you perform any, uh, maintenance or repairs of your equipment or vehicles onsite, or do you propose to perform any onsite?
No, no, no service at the site. Everything would be done, uh, by a third party.
Um, will you agree also that there'll be no retail sale of landscape materials onsite?
Yes, I agree with that, so.
Okay, um. We have adequate parking, so then I guess the only other thing would be, um, actually, that, that was it. The other one's Mr. Sev testified to as it relates to parking. Um, let me just make sure
About, the one about, under known circumstances, shall any vegetative waste material, brush, trees, fill soil be brought back and stored onsite?
We don't store any brush on the site.
You dispose of it before you come back to the yard?
Everything, everything gets disposal of the recycling center.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm just looking at my notes, Mr. Chair, bear with me one second. I think I covered everything I wanted to with Carlos. Yeah, that was it, Mr. Chair.
You, you know, Sal, I, um, I have two questions before we open it and move it to, uh, to others. So for Mr. Ortiz. Um, you say you're storing indoors in, 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 in the facility. So the EPA stuff, the hazardous materials, you know, the fertilizer that requires that kind of identification, you have a special storage container for that?
We do, and we also account with, uh, any, all the pesticide license.
Great.
Or any, 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 uh, pesticides.
Good, good. Okay, that's what I wanted to check on, um.
We know the regulations about storing fertilizer.
You have, you, you meet all of that, yes, okay.
We have all the, everything required.
Great. Well, I'll leave it at that then. So, um, oh. I was gonna ask, because you said you have the, the dumpster. Um, do you do any, uh, you, you don't do any tree removal or anything like that?
No tree removal.
What about snow, snow removal in the winter time?
We do partial, but we don't, we don't, uh, we don't use really, uh, products. We, everything we use, we buy it pallet, uh, in bags, palletized. So we don't, we don't use bulk materials for that.
Got it. Okay, thank you. All right, Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair, um, the applicant asked, answered most of the questions. Just had some, uh, I just want to get clarity on the number and size of the vehicle. So we said ten commercial vehicles is the growth. Is that, so I think you said three dump trucks, two box trucks, three trailers. So can you just give us an idea, ten, what, what does that break down? You're anticipating, is it like five dumps? Five box trucks, two trailers, wha- what are you thinking?
Uh, I mean, listen, I, I don't know what the future's gonna come. Uh, right now, it's what I have, and, uh, you know, we're growing slow, so, uh, I'm hoping the one day I can have maybe five dump trucks, maybe three box trucks, and a few more trailers.
Okay, so the trailers, those are like, uh, closed bottoms? Where if you store something on that, it's not gonna be leaking into like the ground or anything like that?
Yeah, the trailers don't, don't have any oil, and then, so everything's operated.
Okay, and then, uh, the dump trucks, are they mason drums, uh, dumps or full-size dumps?
Uh, one mason and two full-size.
And then the box trucks, like what would you say lengthwise those typically are?
They have a twelve-foot body on them, plus the caps, so I'm estimating maybe six, uh, maybe sixteen, eighteen feet, well.
Okay, so it's not a full, like SU forty, twenty-six feet or something?
No, no, no. No, for small operation.
Okay, yeah, I, I just wanted to get that on the record, Mr. Chairman. The applicant does have oversized parking spaces. I think there are ten by twenty-eight of those in the center of the site, and then there's the additional head-on parking spaces. You know, the two dump trucks are probably a little bit big for most of those parking spaces that are on the high end of it. Um, you know, one of them's a mason dump, the trailers, you know, it's just the trailer being parked, not the vehicle attachment, so. And I think there is adequate parking space to accommodate most of that and the growth. Um, I just didn't want to make sure we weren't getting the oversized box trucks where, uh, you know, things start to get a little bit tight in that back area there. Um, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Charlie. Jen?
Uh, they answered all my questions.
Okay, great. Board members?
Okay, um, what I have here is a couple of things, um.
Mr. Mur.
When you, yeah, when you finish up at the end of the day, um, I mean, the only issue I have is you you may have stuff on your trucks and dump them in mourning, because most places like Maza usually close around three, two or three. I mean, I don't have an issue with it, but I'm just saying, I think it should be on record. If there is gonna be debris on the truck that it's If there is gonna be debris on the truck that it's, you know, upfront about it.
Yeah, but, I mean, most of the, if the vehicles carry anything, it could be in the morning or the afternoon, but we have a FCI two minutes away from us down. On thirty.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so where do you dump the stuff now?
In FCI, recycling center in Freeco.
Okay.
It's only five minutes, two, three minutes from the site.
Okay, that's, that's good, um, do you do anything with like plants where you would have leftover plants, maybe from, uh, you know, a couple of your jobs during the day?
We try not to store any plants because it's, it's hard to keep them alive, uh, but maybe once in a while, we have maybe a tree or so, so, um. I, I would probably, you know, maybe have one or two, a couple bushes here and there, but nothing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with that, and, um.
Wait, Mr. Martins, just before you go further.
Yeah.
Christine, you're gonna have to address that because that's a condition of the conditional uses, so just want you to be. I, I'm not saying it's an issue or not, but it says, no circumstances shall any vegetative waste be brought back. So plants that are intended to be used in a different location being brought back onto the site is gonna require testimony under a D three.
I'm just sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and going back, uh, Mister, um, Sayad, Chairman Sayad did mention about the pesticide storage. So as long as that's in clients with the New Jersey D E P and also with the town right to know. As long as you're complying with that as part of the stipulation with this approval, um, I'm okay with that.
We already comply with those all requirements and with the, uh, with everything of the D E P.
Does any of your trailers, are they enclosed, are they some open, some enclosed for your lawn equipment?
Uh, some of them, yeah, but uh for the, for all the pesticide services, we, uh, we operate, we operate with the, with the box truck running enclosed. You know, to comply with the D E P and all our vehicles also contain the pesticide license on the side. Okay, required by the D E P.
Yeah, I think the box trucks are ideal for that, so I don't have any issues with that, okay, I have no more questions this time.
Thank you, any other board members?
Now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Barillo?
Yes, um, I do have a couple of questions, um. Fuel for your equipment, how, how much of that is, is kept onsite?
We have the gas stations next to me.
So you keep, you won't keep any fuel, no fuel needs to be, for your equipment needs to be kept onsite?
No, no, only, you know, regular cans that we use for, for our lawn equipment.
Okay, how, how many of those?
Uh, you know, normally, we, we carry each truck, maybe carries one five-gallon, uh, container for, uh.
On the truck?
On the truck, yeah, and most of ours is stored in the boxes of the truck.
And my point I'm getting to is, if you're, if you're, if fuel is being stored, I would say that it would have to be in a fireproof cabinet if they're. At least within that building.
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't, we don't store any fuel in the, um, in the building. I'm also against that because of the, uh, odor of the gasoline too.
Okay, um, is there fencing? Between that residential building and the commercial? Whereas nobody from the residential can just walk onto your, um, commercial business?
If I'm not mistaken, Sal, uh, I'm sorry, Rob can answer that question better, but I know there's, there's gonna be, uh, every, all the back parking is gonna be enclosed with the vinyl fence.
I think he's talking about the house, you're talking about the house onsite?
The, the private dwelling, so, so somebody can't come out of private dwelling, walk alongside the, the, that, and then get in through the back?
No, there, there's no access, it will be a fence all around the, the, uh, the back parking and everything for the operation. And it's gonna be a gate too, and the, um, I think it's gonna be a gate, uh, designated for the, um. For the box parking too.
Right, we established the gate on the, on the commercial side, my concerns are, again, you're, you don't live in that private dwelling. You have somebody else who lives there, that they're not gonna be able to walk onto the commercial property.
Oh, I see, yeah, we have no problem providing a, a fence, you know, surely would be better for them to have a private yard in there too for them. So we have no problem providing the, uh, fence to separate the two brow, um, the two users.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to clarify that for Mr. Burley, the applicant is proposing a six-foot-high solid mono fence around the entire rear storage area. It ties into the northeastern corner of the building and wraps around the entire rear storage area. And then at the northwest corner of the building, there's a sliding gate that ties into that fence, so that'll be fully enclosed. And to Mr. Brollo's comment about like, um, you know, fuel storage and fire and things like that, I would just ask, um, two conditions. Obviously, the gate's gonna have to have a Knox box for fire access, uh, for the fire bureau. And then, uh, Sal just app, asked that the applicant, uh, provide, uh, you know, sufficient spill kits and any fire extinguishers. That, as may be required per building code, um, you know, for the site, is that, is that acceptable?
Yes, that's acceptable.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Great.
Mr. Chairman?
One second, is Mr. Barillo finished?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cantor, you're up.
Um, just a quick suggestion on, on the fuel storage, when, when I worked at the ballpark in the, in the grounds crew, we had a little locker. It was only, it was a small thing on the ground that held maybe like six, seven gas cans, and it was, it had a lid on it, so it was fireproof. Um, I, I can't imagine it was more than like a hundred bucks, it might be a suggestion.
Carlos, did you hear that?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, when I worked at the, at the ballpark, uh, we had a, a, a little locker, brown locker, fireproof for storage of extra fuel cans. So that if there was a need to store extra fuel, um, it held, I guess it held maybe ten of those, those fuel cans. Um, you know, it was just a little brown locker that was fireproof, and, and it could be stored away from the building.
Yeah, we, we can provide that, that's not a problem for, for store all the, uh, the fuel.
Does that work, Charlie?
That works for me, and I would just say, uh, any approval is subject to Fire Bureau's review and approval too, so.
Correct. Any other board members?
With, with the storage of the fertilizer that's gonna be contained inside the building, does that require any special, uh, fire suppression issues? Or extinguisher sufficient for that?
They, they mainly require ventilation for that and to be separated from the rest of the equipment. So we're planning to designate one section of the building for that, and we're gonna separate it. With proper ventilation and all the requirements, uh, for storage of fertilizer from the, uh, from any requirements from the D E P.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Uh, Mr. Chair, one more thing, going back to what Mr. Barillo was saying, I would be okay. Instead of putting a fence between the residence and the commercial property, even if they did it with the screening with, you know, landscape plants. I kinda would like, maybe that would be maybe a, another choice as opposed to just putting a vinyl fence up.
Yes, we have no problem using, uh, doing a privacy trees in there too, you know.
I just, I just think it would look better than, I mean, I know we needed around the outsor- the back buildings and stuff, but I'm thinking it might. I don't know, I, I don't, I don't like seeing too many fences in that kind of a situation, I'd be more. Favorable to a, a buffer with natural, you know, plants.
How does that affect security?
For, for, for what, for the, uh, for the, for the private building?
Yes, well, there'll still be fencing towards the building.
The, the fence will still be there, I guess, for the storage, cuz I, I would definitely want to keep my privacy for, for safety of my equipment, you know, uh. But the, yeah, we can put a screen of trees, you know, i- if, if it's ideal better, uh, I think it would be better, you know, it's more natural.
Yeah, okay.
We could work with Shari on that.
Yeah, right, I think that's fine, let's just do that.
Any, any, anyone else, any board members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just wanna make, uh, the applicant aware that along with D E P regulations, the township has a hazmat disclosure form that needs to be filled out yearly. Or any hazardous materials, that's a separate application from D E P, uh, in addition, uh. Charlie or Miss Alfie here might be able to answer this question, is there any kind of fencing around the retention basin? The concern would be if there's any kids living in that home, uh, I believe the retention basin actually holds water. Be acting like a pool, I, I wouldn't want anybody just kinda wandering into that.
Uh, Rob?
Go ahead, Mr. Alfie.
I think, well, well, Rob Siv, you still there?
I'm here.
How, how are we, um, is there a fencing or anything at the stormwater basin?
The stormwater basin's not designed to permanently hold water, it only holds water during the storm events, um, there's no fencing proposed around the basin now. And if the board feels the need to fence around that basin, um, what I usually recommend is a post and rail fence with wire mesh on the. Outside of that post and rail fence. It's an attractive type of fence, the wire mesh helps keep somebody from climbing into the basin, but they're with the posts on the inside, they can climb out. They do get in, but it's not the intent for that basin to hold water on a permanent basis. So I'll leave it to the.
But it does hold water, correct, at some point?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Chair, what I would say is, um, I definitely think that, being that the residents could have kids, I think the fencing is a valid concern. And I, the applicant's agreeing that they would provide it, I would say, I don't know that we need like black mono coated chain link fence. Even though this is a commercial site, it's still kind of a agricultural part of town. So I think the post and rail, the chicken wire might be a little bit more fitting with the characteristic, uh, characteristic of that part of town. So as long as it's, uh, four foot high and, uh, you know, can't physically climb through or over it. Uh, I think that would be acceptable for, for small children, and just to keep in mind, it does hold water, but it's only for larger storm events that you're gonna have. Up to two feet of water, and then it should drain within seventy-two hours, so it's not a permanent wet pond, but it will have water during more significant storm events, so.
Thank you.
We have no objection to that.
Okay, Johnny, you good with that?
Uh, yes, thank you.
All right, and, uh, and the applicant, John, did the applicant satisfy? And acknowledge that he has to submit the annual?
He did.
Yes, we, we have no problem with that.
Alright, good, great, thank you. Mr. Alfie, it's all yours.
Yes, I just wanna follow up with Mr. Ortiz on one point, because the, um, the D three relief that came up during his testimony, um. Is, is new, uh, we, we didn't focus in on that, so Carlos, the question you, that was asked of you about bringing back potentially. Excess landscaping and or trees that you were installing on the site and you had something extra and you brought it back. That would trigger, uh, a variance relief that the planner can justify, but we wanna try and get a better idea of the extent of. What would ha- when that would happen, how often and what would come back, and, and, and then what come, when it comes back, how long would it remain onsite?
Uh, I mean, nor- normally, we don't, we don't bring anything back, but if we do it, it probably sits there for a few days. And then we, uh, we, if we have to reuse it, we use it right away.
And if you don't reuse it, what happens to it?
It has to be used, so, all the plants or anything we bring back, we reuse it right away.
Alright, so, I mean, I guess Jen, the question and Christine could cover is whether that's considered, uh. Vegetative waste material, um, or not, but we can get to the, get into that later. Alright, Mr. Chair, we have, um, John Ray, our traffic expert, as the next witness, Johnny, you there?
I'm there, I think I'm on, unmuted.
Yes, you are.
Hear me, okay, good.
Can you, uh, we're seeking, have you qualified as a traffic expert, would you place your credentials on the record, please?
Sure, I'm, I'm a licensed professional engineer, my field of specialty is traffic engineering. I have a total of, uh, forty-seven years' experience in the traffic engineering field. Uh, an undergraduate degree in civil engineering from NJIT and a master's in transportation engineering from NYU. And I've, uh, appeared before this board in the past as traffic expert.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, we accept your credentials.
Thank you.
John, you prepared a traffic statement, uh, November of twenty twenty-two, we just summarized what, what the state, what you did to perform the statement and what your conclusions were.
Sure, well, we did a traffic generation estimate for the proposed project based on the, uh, the, the most, uh. The land use codes in the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, we looked for a land use code. That most closely resembled, you know, the project that was going forward. And that land use code was land use code number one eighty, which is specialty trade contractor. And based on the size of the building and the office, we are projecting, based on the I T data, a total of seven peak hour trips during the morning peak hour. Nine peak hour trips during the afternoon peak hour, and those numbers correlate very well with Mr. Ortiz's testimony regarding operations. So it's pretty much right on the money, those are the numbers that the D O T are go- uh, is going to use when they issue a permit for the property. Uh, the parking is adequate, the driveway width is adequate, the only other thing, uh, our client has agreed to. Is to restrict the driveway to right-in, right-out movements, and, uh, when we make the application to D O T. Uh, the driveway will be, uh, designed to, uh, restrict movements onto and off the property to be right-in, right-out. And it will qualify for a minor permit from the NJ D O T.
And, and John, the, the, the testimony from the client, the applicant about potential ex- expansion of his business. Which was relatively minor expansion, would that in any way change the conclusions you've reached, um, regarding the adequacy?
No, it would not, it would still qualify for a, a minor permit, a minor permit at D O T is any, uh, land use that will generate less than five hundred daily trips. And clearly, uh, even with the expansion, that wouldn't, we wouldn't even be close to exceeding that threshold.
Okay, and the right-in, right-out, uh, was a request that Charlie made of us, is that correct?
And, and, and yes, and our client has agreed to that.
Okay, thank you, that's all we have from Mr. Ray, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and then, uh, the reason that I made that request is, is you can see in the concept or the aerial rendering here, there is gore striping. That runs across, uh, the median for Route thirty-three there, Route thirty-three is a fifty-mile-per-hour roadway, vehicles coming in and out with trailers, you know. Uh, the approval goes with the land, obviously, we'd like to think that any future user is gonna limit it to two trailers. But if there is any growth or change in the characteristic or makeup of vehicles, we're not having tow trailers making a left-hand turn across that group, gorge, uh. Gorge striping, and, um, uh, you know, I think also too, you know, this, people coming to the site being that there's no visitors. They're gonna be familiar where the site is, they're gonna be coming on a daily basis, so they should get used to that right turn in and out only restriction. Uh, you know, so hopefully we don't see that turn across the gore striping, um. Mr. Ray talked about the minor access permit, that's great, that's up to their jurisdiction, uh, the only comment I had was, I just wanna put it on the record. It's less than twenty-five parking spaces for this site, so there's no requirement of E V parking, uh, spaces for the site. I just wanna get that on the record, um, I have no other comments or questions.
Thank you, Charlie. Jen, you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay, board members, right-in, right-out, any questions on the traffic?
I concur, I, that's, I think, absolutely necessary, right-in and right-out, cuz I know there's. Oak, oak, uh, Oakerson is right, going right in, but the driveway's a little bit to the, uh, east or west of the property. So there, it's not like head-on with the Oakerson Road, right? No, it's offset. Okay, that's, that's all I need to know, and I think, I think Charlie covered it, so I'm good.
Great.
Any other board members? Not hearing any, Sal, back to you.
Alright, our last, uh, witness is, uh, Christine Caphone.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me okay?
We hear you.
Great, um, should I run through my credentials so I can be accepted, um?
Yes.
Great, good evening, for the record, Christine Lusaro Caphone, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been testifying and practicing for twenty-eight years as such, um, my license is current and valid. I have been qualified here at the Howell zoning board, as well in excess of four hundred or so other planning zoning boards throughout the state. I teach planning and zoning courses for the Rutgers Center for Government Services, and I am also a court-appointed affordable housing special master in about two dozen communities.
Alright, we accept your credentials, Christine.
Thank you.
Christine, you heard the testimony from the three, uh, witnesses before you, and you understand the relief that was being sought this evening. was being sought this evening, including now this D three relief for that excess material that might occur on occasion. Would you describe for the board the relief that's required and place the uh required proofs on the record, please?
Yes, of course. So again, good evening, Chair and um members of the board. For the record, Christine Zara Caphone. The relief that we're seeking tonight is to allow um, there's a few D variances that we need in conjunction with this application. The existing single family home is not a permitted use in the H D four zone, nor does the H D four zone allow us to have two principal uses on one lot. So the introduction of the landscape company, when we have that single family home existing, all requires us to seek a D variance for two uses on one lot. Landscape businesses are conditionally permitted uses in the H D four zone. The H D four zone enumerates by letter thirteen specific conditional use requirements. Requirement F reads, under no circumstances shall any vegetative waste material, brush trees, fill soil be stored on the property. So to the limit extent um um, we intend to do that, we'll need to seek that relief. But additionally, I think in an abundance of caution, I was planning to go through the D three standards anyway, because standard M in your ordinance reads, a buffer with a minimum width of fifty feet shall be provided along all property line, which abuts a residential zone. The buffer shall be consistent with the requirements for buffers found within one eighty eight dash sixty three. So to the extent that you read the the latter part, meaning that we need um a variance because our buffer is not completely compliant, we'll seek that relief. Um, so as far as what is rendering this site particularly suitable, the H D four sets forth a minimum area of forty thousand square feet for this use. As you heard Mr. Siv testify in his opening remarks, our site is nearly two and a half acres, so more than double the requirements, the required minimum lot area. So there's certainly ample opportunity for the site to host both of the uses. In additionally, the driveways are separated for the two uses. And as you heard, um the applicant testify as well as our traffic engineer, this is a very limited um use of traffic. We only have about ten to twelve cars coming in. So certainly that is far less than many of the other permissible uses in the H D four zone. If you had an opportunity to look at what is as of right there, you will know that offices, financial institutions, retail sales, healthcare facilities, restaurants, microbreweries, craft distilleries, schools and entertainment uses, flex space assisted delivery facilities and self storage facilities are all allowed as of right in the H D four. Conditionally, we're allowed to have gas stations, warehousing, distribution, automobile sales, automobile auctions. So my point in telling you all this is that it's a fairly intensive and permissive zone that allows a number of uses that would have a much greater impact. Um, and then again, we also testify that we don't have visitors to our site. So for all these reasons, I think the board can find that the site is particularly suitable to support um these two uses. When you're dealing with the absence of the conditional use or the non compliance with the conditional use standards, the board has to look at the fact that absent compliant conditional use standards, is this still an appropriate location for the proposed use? Um, one of the goals in your master plan is to encourage new businesses and industries to locate among the township's highway corridors. So despite the fact that we're not meeting the buffer requirements, we are improving the buffer um in both the front and the eastern portion of the site, and we're essentially leaving our western and northern or rear buffer um intact. So the buffers, as they exist on the site today, are only getting better if the application is approved by the by the board. So I think we can certainly substantiate that burden of proof, that absent compliance with those buffer standards, it's still an appropriate location. As far as the standard where we're not allowed to bring excess material back to the site, I mean, it's really, it's not the applicant's intention that if he and and his company is retained to do a fall cleanup or a spring cleanup, that they bring that back. It's really more of a situation where if he's intended to install fifteen arborvitae, and for whatever reason, the job can't, they all can't be planted for the survivability of the plants, or that you may see some of that plant material come back. So I think in an abundance of caution, it's probably appropriate, as Ms. Beam suggested, that we that we seek that relief so that um Mr. Uh, Carlos doesn't find himself in a situation where he's being issued zoning violations. So we'll certainly seek that relief, but I think given the fact that the materials will be stored in the rear of the site, not particularly visible, and we will have active buffering on site, the board can be very comfortable. Um, that absent compliant with this that conditional use standard, this would remain in appropriate location for the proposed use. Uh, so in my opinion, there are a few of the purposes of the municipal land use law that are advanced by this application. Criteria G talks about sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of use. Um, this site was recently rezoned from the H D two to the H D four zone. Um, I did have an opportunity to pull um both the master plan as well as that ordinance and um, one of the things that were stated in the master plan was the intention of that rezoning proposal was to maintain uniform zoning in the area along the route thirty three corridor. Um, and I think that this application certainly is consistent with other uses in the Route thirty three corridor. So I refine that the criteria G is satisfied. Criteria M also talks about an efficient use of the land, avoiding urban sprawl and degradation of the environment. I think that this is an efficient use of the lands. Um, this is an existing developed site with a single family home. But I think that we can certainly develop this two and a half acre property in such a way that we meet all of the setbacks and the bulk criteria, and like I said, improve the buffers. So I think we are efficiently using the land along the highway through Highway thirty three corridor, which is exactly what your master plan um calls for. And the way you see that goal in your master plan is to encourage new businesses and industries to locate along the highway, the township's highway corridors, which will grow the economy of Howell and provide new services and potential employment opportunity for residents. That's not my interpretation of the goal. That's exactly how we find it in the master plan. So when we look at the negative criteria, the negative criteria does not ask you to halt us or any other applicant to a standard that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grants of the variance outweigh any detriment. And here are the D variances together with the C variance that we're seeking for the accessory structure in the front yard setback, which is the proposed door motor management basin. In my opinion, as a professional planner, can all be granted without substantial detriment to the public good or to the zone plan. This use is legislatively where Howell has determined um landscape contractor yards to be appropriate and as well as trade contractor businesses and numerous other intensive uses. So from an impact on the zone man or the public good, I do not see the debt, the detriment rising to the level of substantial. The applicant has agreed to modify his proposal to a right in, right out to satisfy your board professionals. I believe they've also stipulated on the record that they will, in fact, um construct the sidewalk if that's the board's preference, as well as meet with your professionals to ensure that the additional landscaping that we're proposing does an excellent job of satisfying the intent of the ordinance. So with that informs my decision that this application can meet its burden of proof with respect to um the positive and negative criteria as well as the Medici reconciliation of the omission of the um, the use, which is really just the omission of having two uses on one lot. I think this is a very ideal site to have these two uses on one lot.
That concludes the planning testimony, Mr. Chair.
All right, uh Jen?
I take no exception to the testimony as presented. I agree that this kind of use is intended in the master plan and through the modification of the zoning uh to be allowed in this area. I think the deviations from the conditional use standards are minor. Um, I appreciate the applicant's willing to be conservative and request that relief. Um, you know, instead of arguing about the the strict language, just to be conservative and requested, I I think that the the relief that they're asking for is very minor in that regard. Um, I also don't find it unusual for um properties in this area to have multiple uses, a residential use and a business. Um, so I I don't disagree with the use variance testimony at all. Um, and uh with that, I would bring it back to the board.
Thank you, Jen. Christine, you certainly laid it out there. So um, let me uh run it by Charlie. Do you have anything?
Yeah, the only comment that I have is uh, I think it's an important distinction that the applicant indicated that there's no recycling operations and that there's also no retail sales. You bring waste back if you were trying to recycle it for mols and things like that. So those two things are catchall, where I don't think you have to be concerned about the waste. Uh, and then just to sum it up for the record, um applicant is proposing a septic system. We'll have to come out with county board health approval for that. Uh, and then also any outside agency approvals as as required, but nothing further.
Sal, you're good with it?
Oh, yes. Yes, Mr. Chair.
The ordinance, the conditional use standards preclude us from having retail sales. One of the conditional use standards is no landscape retail sales. So we would have to seek seek additional relief if the applicant were interested in doing that.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Fellow board members. Any questions? Comments?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Ryan?
I I'm fine too.
I have no questions.
All good, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barillo, Mr. Cantor, everyone's good.
Mr. Chair, I do uh, I just wanted to get back to the I was a little um just where we where we're standing with the this fencing between the private dwelling and the um commercial space. And Mr. Martins uh said that some type of privacy fencing with natural shrubs would be nice. Um, my one hang up is I just don't want to see any kid um, be able to get through that and uh such a natural type of fencing would take time to grow.
Mr. Sev, can you um clarify, please?
Sure. So we are still maintaining and proposing the six foot high fence around the storage and parking rear yard area. That is to remain. So there'll always be fencing between the residence and the commercial building. The additional landscaping, my understanding, Mr. Martins is in this location between the commercial building and the residential house, just to add a little bit of a visual screen.
Okay. Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Barillo?
No, that's it.
Okay. All right, so. Shari, any last minute?
I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Agiar, we're good?
We're good, sir. Can I just have actually just one last bit of clarification? Uh, uh, Mr. Uh, the applicant had noted that the home is uh occupied by family members. Um, can we just verify whether it's actually being rented by those family members or is it an extended family living there rent free?
Mr. Ortiz?
A family member living rent free in there.
But just, but Mr. Chair, just for the record, um, that may change someday in the future. That's just how it's currently occupied. We we don't know who's gonna live there for the next five, ten years.
That's fine, as long as he's aware that there's a landlord registration process and a rental C O process in town uh that needs to be abided by uh if that change should occur.
Okay, fine, I understand. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Sal, it's all yours.
Uh, that's all. We just would request that you open it to the public and then I will give a brief summation if I'm allowed to.
Okay. Fellow board members. Can we open?
Motion to open the public, Mr. Chairman.
Martins, do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second. Stanton, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eileen, let's open it to public, please.
All right, we will now open the meeting to the public. If you're calling in, you could press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself. There's no one from the public raising their hand.
And you don't see anyone calling in?
No.
Okay, we'll give it another twenty seconds. Okay, fellow board members, I don't see anyone raising their hand or calling in from the public, so may I have a motion to close the public, please?
Motion to close.
Barillo, close.
A second.
We got a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eileen, we close the public.
Meeting is now closed to the public.
Mr. Alfieri?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, um, the applicant, we believe that this is a perfect use for this location and this property. Uh, we've agreed to address uh all the conditions or comments that are contained within the board professional reports. We've also agreed to address all the comments and suggestions that the board members have made during the course of the meeting, including right in, right out limitation, sidewalk, asphalting the site, supplementing landscape, working with Shari on that. Um, and we believe therefore that we've met our burdens, burden. Um, Mr. Ortiz will be a very good uh taxpayer and neighbor for the township, and we would request that the board grant the approvals as proposed.
Okay, well, you know, Sal, as as required, you're entitled to have seven board members and we only have six.
I understand. I think we're comfortable. We we've been texting amongst ourselves and we feel like the board um has received positively our testimony and we're prepared to go forward.
Board members. What's the pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, um, I would like to make a motion to approve this application. I think it is a good use for the site. The planner made a good point that it is a good fit for this area. I'm glad that we did bring up the issue with the relief with the extra plants coming back occasionally. I think that's good to have it in there. Charlie's recommendation on right turn, right in and right out is a great idea. I'm comfortable with the drainage. I think the security is fine and therefore I'm making a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
We have um, was the Stanton or Mr. Cantor? Who's taking it?
Mr. Cantor could have.
Thank you.
Mr. Cantor is seconding it. Go ahead, Mr. Cantor. You're seconding this motion to approve?
I am, I am chairman.
All right, great. All right, Eileen, we have a motion and a motion to approve. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Mr. Ortiz, thank you for investing in and developing your business in Howell Township. Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Mr. Ortiz, good luck and I vote yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
I hope Mr. Ortiz can grow his business uh beyond his expectations. I vote yes.
And Chairman Sayah?
I'd like to say, you know, to Christine Caphone, that was probably her best summation I've heard to date. So.
All I do is I take your planner's review letter and I go down it and I said, check it, hit that point and at that point, hit that point. I have a little checklist right here of Ms. Bean's review letter and I blow through it, done and dusted. It's a nice map for me.
Yes. Mr. Alfieri? Uh, for you and the applicant, you're working with fashion and agreeing to all the conditions and you still have work to do, you know, I wish you all the best of luck and I vote yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you all. Uh, thank you and have a good night and enjoy your summer if we don't see you before.
Oh, we're gonna see you because we're live starting June first.
Oh, yes.
Be seeing you, right?
That's true.
Have a good summer. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Eileen, that motion carried, correct?
Good night.
Yes, application's approved.
Thank you, everybody, for the time, by the way.
Congratulations, Mr. Ortiz.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, good night, everyone.
Good night to the applicant. Okay, board members, this was it. We're live June tenth.
Um, June twelfth.
Twelfth.
Well, good.
Oh, I can't wait.
All right, um, you know, we start at seven P M. Uh, so hopefully, you know, we'll uh be in our seats by then, right, everyone? It's gonna be tough, tough, gonna be sunny. People, traffic, short traffic. Plan ahead. Um, no, listen, I want to wish everyone a happy and 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 healthy Memorial Day weekend holidays and you take good care of yourselves. And uh, I'll see you in June. Uh, may I have a motion to uh to close? Adjourn.
I'll make it to adjourn.
No, we want to stay.
All right, Stanton, Burton, Scantor, everyone, uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good one.
Good night.
I am, see you live.
Aye.
Good night. See you in person.
You got it.